They were to reconsider that road or any other road. Uh, people on the road have to be noticed with a certified letter or a thirty, thirty day notice. Um, so if they were going to consider that road, you would get a certified letter from this office.
And, and if we, if we did, what would we have to do to counter that if we felt that that shouldn't happen?
Um, well, sort of going, delving into giving some legal advice. Um, the, it's, the whole thing is controlled by, uh, uh, statute. Um, so there's statutory requirements and there's, um, different, um, appeal, like if the, if the board made a decision that someone didn't agree with, there's appeal periods, things of that nature. Um, but it's title, uh, I think it's title, title eighteen, you know, seven hundred four star, seven oh seven. If you wanted to check it out, we can feel free to do that.
Okay.
Hi.
Sure. And I, I don't know your name, so I, I need to make a record of who's here.
Um, Dan and Alice Fran.
Okay.
Did that answer your questions?
Yeah.
It sounds like it's just Richard Hill.
Yeah.
The road that he lives.
Okay. In that neighborhood, yeah.
Yep. Thank you.
Sure. You're welcome.
Okay. So you have the report on the road reclassifications in with our attorneys to make sure.
Um, I haven't sent it to them yet, but I do need to pick it, we do need to pick a date, so, let's say, uh, what is today, Monday? Let's say I get a letter out by the end of this week. Give a couple of days for delivery. So let's, you know, try to pick a, pick a thirty day window, at least thirty days. So let's say I get a letter out by the fifteenth. You, you're looking at like October eighteenth, nineteenth, something around there. I would feel comfortable picking thirty days out.
For a site visit.
For the site visit and then you come back here and, um, take the testimony.
Let's do, can we do the eighteenth of October? What, Wednesday, Wednesday?
Uh, um, Wednesdays, I think the third Wednesdays of the month are the planning commission meetings.
That was, that's correct.
So I, I don't know if you can.
What the nineteen?
Um, my village trustee meeting.
That's it.
Uh, that's my, that's my night to cook dinner. If I'm being, if I'm being truthful.
Can we do it the sixteenth on a Monday?
Uh, you'd be cutting it close. I mean, if I get it, if I get the thing by the middle of this week, yeah, I mean, we could do the sixteenth tentatively. Um,
Let's leave it tentatively at the sixteenth on a Monday.
Six.
For the site visit.
So we're going to vote on this stuff tonight.
We do a site visit.
Tonight.
And then, then we come back.
Yep.
And then discuss it.
You take testimony from.
Take testimony from the landowners.
And then I think your decision, you have to issue a decision.
Then fifteen?
I think, no, no, I think it's sixty days.
Sixty days?
Um.
How many fifteens, thirties and sixties and times?
We can't do it somewhere.
Okay.
So we're gonna have two, both, both Phil and Philimms.
Mm-hmm. We'll visit two sites on the sixteen.
You want to do them both on the same day?
Let's do them both on the same day.
Right, it's just talking in the dark, right? So, what time?
Uh, is four o'clock okay with everyone?
On Monday?
That okay with you, Paul?
Right, right now it is, yeah.
All right, sixteenth, four o'clock.
Yeah.
Um.
We'll meet here and we'll go to the loans.
I've got a note here, uh, the town trails consultant would like to set up a, a joint meeting, either a joint meeting or a meeting with both the village board and the select board to kind of report on the report that they're, um, working on. Um, I suggested to them to do a joint meeting and actually, have you heard anything from them about, instead of either a joint meeting or you're gonna have two meetings?
No, they haven't responded, but we have, there's a steering committee meeting tomorrow.
So.
So it's potentially a joint meeting with, with these guys.
To, to me, that would be the best use of the time, but, um, I've got a village meeting this Thursday, so I'm gonna go so, um, I just wanted to put on your, your radar, this board radar that it's coming.
Okay.
Um, I've got a note here, D N H rail trail council meeting scheduled for September thirteenth. And I meant to make a copy of the invitation, I can give it to the board. Um, it's a new, well, Mick, you're in the audience, so do you want to certainly? I have to put you on this line.
No, not at all. Uh, speaking as my, uh, planner role at the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, uh, we're putting together a, uh, Delaware Hudson rail trail council, um, in order to sort of, uh, produce a, uh, region wide management plan so that all the different municipalities, the different stakeholders, level go clubs, trip, like, you know, biking and hiking enthusiasts, uh, all can sort of have a, uh, you know, a single place to come to in case there's any issues with the trail, allow us to collaborate and find efficiencies in terms of, you know, if we want to put a map one place, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, you know, twenty minutes down the road. Um, so pretty exciting, especially if anyone's been hearing all the hubbub about the Loyal Valley Rail Trail up north. Um, you know, it could be a pretty huge, I mean, it really is a, a huge asset for our region and, uh, could unlock a lot of really important, um, you know, health and equity benefits and economic opportunity.
What time is this meeting, Nick?
It is at six P M.
Where?
It's both at the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, uh, sixty seven Merchants Row, third floor, uh, in Rutland. Um, and we're also broadcasting it, uh, we'll have a Microsoft Teams meeting if you want to join that way. We'll be recording it, so if you miss it, we'll send it out. Uh, just, um, shoot me an email at nick, N I C, at rutlandrpc.org and I can add you to the mailing list. That goes for any question.
Okay, thanks, I didn't mean to.
No, I know.
Thank you, Nick.
And will Zoom, Nick? Or is it, it won't, it won't be on Zoom?
It'll be on Microsoft Teams.
Teams.
Zoom's terrible cousin. Uh, I don't think you need to download anything, you should be able to access it in the browser.
If you have a smartphone, you can point on that.
Yeah, so how would we see the link?
Uh, just shoot me an email.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am attending for the town as well. In my role for the tack.
But so if we don't get a chance to meet, you can inform us.
Yeah, and just a little, this is just a preliminary meeting, uh, so it won't be open to the public, it'll just be an invite only list, the municipal stakeholders and that sort of thing, the established bylaws and that sort of thing, and then all subsequent meetings will be open to the public.
All right. Basically, Sarah will just take, take the lead on that one.
I was planning on attending as well.
There will be people.
All right, now you've got us. Okay?
Um, I just have a note here, we, to close out the block grant that, um, Jonas and, uh, Michelle McCarron actually together for the pavilion and the, the walking track at the senior center, we had to have a quote unquote public meeting to close the grant out. Um, so I'm working on that, just wanna put it on everyone's radar. I was gonna try to do it near, uh, the next item on the agenda here was the dedication of the pavilion. They're doing a dedication in Jonas's name on the twenty-third. I'm gonna try to do it around the same time, uh, I don't think I'm gonna make that, I know I'm not gonna make that deadline because I have to publish a thing in the paper. Um, it's, I'll put it as part of a regular meeting. It's just a, a public meeting where we have to specifically, um, notice it and take comments and questions from the public if it has on, hasn't.
When we're doing a dedication to Jonas for the pavilion at the Younger Heart on the twenty-third. Carol, do you want to speak a little about that? It'd be, um, what time it says that's at?
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock, it's like that.
Um, something about Joe.
Yeah.
Joe will be there, four o'clock, yeah. Um, he, in fact, I know the chambers of the Lindahl. I'm leading it, um, they posted the ribbon cutting and we had a beautiful slate, um, plaque, I guess you'd call it, um, that was made by someone that Jonas knew and well. And he actually donated it to us. It's very nice and that will be hung, I believe, on the side that is facing the senior center. For the vote. Um, should have, should have faced for thirty or the center. Can't be on the front because of the design of the um, and it's really, I don't know how much it will be. You know, you'd have to walk up close, you're not like a big, big from the way or whatever. So, you know, he was a very major player, really, so I think we're all settled. We have some issues before, uh, getting a, um, shed built and then we'll be able to then move forward to the next step of getting, it'll be a furniture that and there are people that go out after we have our daily lunches and do a couple of laps and stuff, so it's achieving what it was.
Quite regularly.
People doing yoga. And we have any questions? Wait, there's more?
All right, that's on the twenty-third at four o'clock. Right? Anything else, Paul?
Um, I do know that, um, you know, you're meeting with the candidates for the select board vacancy, so I tried to keep it brief. Um, I guess if you, if you, if you want, we can move to the, um,
Mary Jo, Peter. Transacting the other law for select board business. Mary Jo?
Okay. So I'm here as your town assessor.
Mm-hmm.
And I just feel I need to address this, something personal against somebody or anything. With all due respect, I'm here to request that the select board and its authority to consider an appeal given with the director of property valuation or review or superior court as appropriate. The B C A decision is written. This is, I'm addressing, uh, the property, sixty-one Beaman Street. Is, as written is flawless. By anaprisies and false testimony, I challenge Mr. Nat Miller's testimony with no evidence and the lack of cantiness and accounting for what he calls leasehold improvements without substantiating the leases from all properties within the complex. The B C A also misconstrued information in their report using values that were not under appeal to substantiate the final values. The decision reflects sixty-one Beaman Street, which is the address of a portion only which makes up the Dollar General occupancy. The comparable sales given to the B C A by the assessor comprised but only comparable portion of wholey properties. Uh, fifty-five, fifty-seven and sixty-one. Just in the property. The assessment was not only for the portion of the Dollar General occupied, but also the non-permitted warehouse, not retail store, Damascus, which occupies the back of sixty-one Beaman Street. But also the building occupied by lease by Hubbardton Ford for studio warehouse. Office space, which admittedly can't be used unless retail space is there without further permitting. And the storage building used for personal use, which sounds like there was a new ceiling installed, which was not disclosed to the assessor and may have been an ex parte communication on site if the team concluded previous owner installed. Occupancy has much to do with the value, as spare bonds and structures were previously valued as vacant. And unclear as to what the evidence the committee found compelling that was not repeat testimony to find the assessor's value of nine hundred eighty-two thousand eight hundred dollars not valid. Finally, the decision is signed only by one person and there's no indication or minutes that the board or any portion of the board, which met on August twenty-fifth, twenty-ninth, approved the decision, meaning the meeting called, diverted session and who was present. The select board is the authority to permit the assessor to appeal. I think it would be prudent for the board to authorize an appeal and allow a commercial appraisal to evaluate the properties that are in question. So I'm gonna give you a copy.
Yeah, let's, let's take that, yeah, let's take that copy and we'll, uh.
And I also included a few slides from a B C A training, which, um, I don't know if the B C A is required to take the training when they are appointed. But, um, I added a few slides and the agenda was just very pertinent to the signature of the property.
As you know, we won't make a decision on this tonight, we have to.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm just.
Yeah, we have to look.
I need you to address it, no matter what your decision is. And.
And is it, you know, Mary Jo, is it a thirty day from the date of the decision or?
Um.
I can ask, what's the timeline on this?
I think it's thirty days probably from the decision. I can double check that.
I can check it with the time attorney.
From the decision of the B C A.
The day of the decision, I believe it's thirty days. Um, the appellant also has the same timeline, they can appeal to property valuation or superior court, um, within the same time.
This was August.
I'd have to look for this and find out if I put the timeline.
It was August twenty-nine. So we actually can look at this as a board and actually get it on the agenda on the twenty-fifth. It'd still be within the thirty days.
Thirty days after the day of the mailing of the notice of the decision.
We have to find the date.
I think the decision was mailed.
We'll get, we'll get that from that seat. Yeah, it looks like it's the twenty-ninth. So we can, we'll look at this. Board, I want you to read it, we'll get copies, send it. Read it, study it, and we'll get, get it on the agenda for the twenty-fifth and make a decision then. Is that okay? Because we, you know, we can't just say yes or no, we're not really.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Jo. All right. Rutland Regional Planning Commission? Anything on?
Uh, no, I don't have any updates. The regional board meets on the nineteenth and the tack meets on the twenty-eighth.
Okay. Do you have anything for us?
No, not tonight.
Not tonight?
No.
All right.
It is.
And let's go into public comments.
Do we want to see if anyone from the rescue squad has joined our meeting?
Has anybody from the rescue squad?
We're both here, Kathy and myself.
Right?
So, and mine is here. So since our last meeting, uh, we did meet as a board. Kathy is here with me tonight, um, our other board, one of our other board members. Um, some of the shifts that we made, where we made shift changes. So we're, um, on duty from set twelve hour shifts now. Um, and weekends were twenty-four hour shifts. We have people that are, we raised our rate, our pay rates. And it's town funding coming through, which is what we were waiting on, be able to raise our pay rate, pay rates. Um, so staff are starting to apply. It's not in droves, but we are getting people applying for jobs.
Can you tell me what you raised it to, what it was and what it was raised to?
Um, we were paying fifteen for our, what we call our drivers. Um, we were paying sixteen for our basics and we were paying, starting our advanced providers at seventeen. And we raised our advanced providers to twenty-two and our basics to nineteen. I believe it was. I think that's right, um.
And your drivers, did you raise them?
They're starting out at seventeen.
Seventeen, okay. So seventeen, it went seventeen, nineteen, twenty-two, that's what it went up to.
That's correct. Um, so with that, they're starting, we're starting to get applicants, um, for a month, I think, I think we've had three people apply. Um, so for a month, I think that's a good start considering we don't have a huge pool to start with locally. Um, we're trying to make a pres, better presence, visibility in the community. We started going to the pep rallies again. Some of our volunteers are.
Yeah, I've seen you there.
Pardon me?
I've seen you there.
And, and being at the football games.
Yep.
Um.
Have you had a lot of calls? I mean, what's the call rate, has anything changed as far as your call rate and how you've been able to?
Last, last week we had nineteen calls. Um, we were able to respond to thirteen of them. We dropped six calls, three of which were second calls, so we don't have the staff to cover, we didn't have staff to cover second calls. One was a lift assist at three o'clock in the morning, had, had the call come in the opposite way, we would have gotten the patient up and back into bed and been able to respond to the other call. We can't.
Yep.
You know, you can't control how, yeah, you can't control how your calls come in. So given how our call volume was in the past, I haven't done the billing this week, so I don't know how it has, how it panned out for this past week. Um, but I think we're gonna see things changing. I think the twelve hour coverage will show a better outcome for us. It's a longer period that we have the coverage for answering calls. We're still working on getting the nighttime covered better. Um, the seven P M to seven A M. We do have people on, in town that can cover, but they also work daytime jobs, so, you know, you have that magic hour from three to five that it's tough to get people to answer calls because they have to get up to go to their full-time jobs. So we have some people who will, who can respond and are willing to take night calls if they're not going to a day job. Can't. So we're, we're still working on that and it's a, a work in progress, but we are making a gallant effort at getting everything covered.
Hey.
Are you looking into hiring more full-time staff or are you still sticking with part-time model?
We are looking at full-time, we're looking at whatever people are willing to give us at this point. If somebody wants a full-time job, it, we advertise it as full and part-time. So.
Um, budget season's coming up and we'll be starting our budgeting um, meetings in, probably in October, which is just a few weeks away.
A few weeks away.
So, you know, just, just to let you know, we asked everybody for their budgets and what they need. The proposed, like the library.
Yep.
All that stuff, we incorporated into our budget.
Yep.
And we'll be asking for that.
Of course.
Mike, are you on the board too or?
I'm sorry, Paul.
Are you on the board too?
Uh, no, sir, I'm just a member.
Just, I'm just making my notes, make sure I know what I'm writing.
You're more than just a member, but you are.
Lots of times during the budgeting process, if the board doesn't understand something like that, we'll ask the people that have their budgets with us to come in and just simply explain. And so that we can justify it to the, to the voters of the town for the increases and, and stuff like that.
Understandable.
Okay?
Paul, do you have a question for me or?
No, no, I just was making my notes. Uh?
You want me to just be quiet?
No, 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 I just, I can try my correct notes, that's all.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that update.
No problem.
And we'll, we will be talking again soon because that's a, like we.
I will try next month, back in a month to give you guys an update as to where we're at.
That would be good.
I can't make every two weeks, but I will definitely try to be here at least on a monthly basis to give you guys an update as to what we're, where we're heading.
Yeah, that'd be very good because the public does ask us a lot about it.
I'm, I'm sure they do.
And, you know, we just don't have the answers.
I understand that. I do understand that, you guys, you see us around town, but you don't know what we're doing.
Right.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, one thing, um, now speak out of turn.
No, you're fine, go ahead.
Ma'am?
Yes, truly.
Um, as a long time member since nineteen eighty-nine, we still had ambulances that were hate fit. Um, we've been here for a long time. We've gone through struggles, we've gone through stuff like this before. Um, we haven't seen it this bad in a very long time. And I think a lot of it simply is because society has changed so much, we're not getting the people that are getting involved. I started when I was sixteen years old, emergency services. With that said, we're doing everything we possibly can to recruit and the, the pay raises do help. Um, but we encourage everybody in the community, please, even if you can only give us ten, twenty hours a, a month, if you're willing to try it. We're more willing to pay for your training, uh, what have you, okay? Uh, with that said, there's been a change in our board. Uh, Deb has taken over, uh, the operation part of it. Kathy is our chairman on the board, we have a lot more communication with our members. And we are, based on their suggestions, we are getting out there in the community as much as we possibly can. Um, and Katrina Devonport is actually helping, is helping with that as well. Um, but whatever you can do to not support us, but support us. So if, even if you're not interested, say, hey, here's an application, try it out. The worst you're gonna do is say, this isn't for me. Okay? And we don't have a problem with that. All right? But just to let the community know, as a member, we are doing everything in our power to, to do what we can to step up to the roles. All right? But our, our workforce is limited. Um, and, you know, unfortunately, I have to make a living. Um, that whole business sucks. But, but with that said, we are trying very hard to move forward and with current leadership and the senior members of our squad, we are moving forward. Well, so.
That's one thing we, the town doesn't want to see that fail.
We won't fail.
But, no, the people just get nervous because there are bumps in the road.
There is.
So we'll weather it, we'll get through it.
Exactly. Whatever it takes. I, I only need like three hours of sleep a night. So we'll go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay? Uh, to public comments and concerns? Who's in the back?
Hey.
Hi, Jane, how are you?
I'm good. I'm here because the bridge is almost done and the drainage has really severely tainted my property and has a rock wall that I showed you in video. I actually brought the video for Joel to look at so he can see what I'm talking about when it pours. There used to be a small hole at the bottom of my rock wall and now my rock wall is like this. And the water across the street where Mike parks the school bus, um, that was paved but no culvert was put in, so all the water coming down on that side bumps up over into my property. And I know you guys said you were gonna fix it when the bridge was done, you were gonna do all that. I'm just here to remind you, I'm still waiting. So I sent you this, uh, the, I sent to Paul in twenty twenty-one.
No, the, the wall, the, the, the wall just, was that tipping?
No, my rock wall is a solid rock wall on one side and then where the water went down into my yard and then down through.
Yeah, that's what caused it.
Cracked it. And so it's like, I don't want my kids playing anymore.
Yeah.
So my branch is, my kids.
So we, we have had some conversations with Miller Construction. Um, and essentially they have tentatively agreed to do the work for us, but they can't do anything until they're done with the, the bridge project.
I know, but that's nearing and so that's why I'm here.
Just a reminder.
Thank you.
I'm here to remind you and also because Joel, I, I figured Joel was gonna be part of it. Because where that bump up of tar is, really should have a culvert underneath it or something. Uh, stop the water from flowing across the road, because that's not doing any favors on the road. Either.
I'll come and take a look at it.
Yeah, you couldn't saw what I was.
I, I saw what you were talking about, but I haven't been up there lately to see if they, you said they repaved it?
It's raining, no. The last people I paved it for some reason said, oh, that's the driveway into the field across the street from me where there's a septic tank. And they paved an entrance road there. And now actually, um, Mike does park his school bus there in the winter when he's driving the school bus for the town.
Okay.
And so he does actually use it, so we talked about just removing that tar slab that bumps all the water up and over onto my side. But now I think with him parking there and parking the school bus, it probably just should have some form of a culvert or drainage on that side as well.
Let's take a look at that.
So anyway, Joel, you're Joel, right?
Yes.
Uh, if you want, I, I can send you my video file setting clearly. So I brought my computer with the video on it, and you can see the water patterns during a deluge, because my lawn will have at least as much water.
Yeah, that'd be good to see. That would be good to see.
It's pounding.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
After the meeting, we'll give you some information.
Cool.
Set up a date.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments? Public comments? Who's back there?
Mary Sue.
Mary Sue?
Uh, I was wondering if we can get the status of the website upgrade in updating the town's website? Has there been any progress? I mean, there's, there's such outdated information on it, and it's, it could be improved.
I had a conversation with EcoPixel.
Go ahead.
So EcoPixel is the vendor that we contracted with Recreation, obviously, which was funded through the VORIT grant. They have been trying to connect with us about our website and have offered a proposal to rebuild it, and so the idea at this time, I think, that we're considering or looking into how much it costs, is to combine the planning commission website with recreation website. So that's, that is of it. We probably will have to issue an RFP, given the amount that that would cost to do that work. So I've had conversations, it was just a couple of weeks ago, actually, I had that conversation.
Is that, is that the company that does the planning commission website? You know? Is that a, is a good website?
They don't, they manage it with, with us.
Okay.
So the VORIT committee gathered all of the content and we built it together, so.
She's asked about the planning commission, not the reputation.
Oh, sorry.
Jamie Lee.
Yes, Recreation Commission or Committee.
That's Jamie Lee.
Yeah, Jamie Lee, Jamie Lee has overseen that.
Okay. Yeah. All right. Thank you for that update.
Did that answer your question?
It did.
Okay.
I have, just a comment about the minutes. I know they've been approved, but when I was commenting at the last meeting about the reclassification of the town roads, I actually read from the meeting minutes of the November twelfth, twenty eighteen meeting, and I just wanted to specify that it's, I read that it's J Drive and Lennox Road that were, that were mentioned by Ron back in each one of the two minutes, and that's not how it was relayed in the August twenty-eighth meeting minutes.
I didn't think we were discussing, we dropped that road.
No, but it was during public comment. I was discussing what, what was being discussed five years ago, and it was J Drive and Lennox Drive at the time. It was just a clarification of that.
Okay, I'll fix those.
And just one more quick question. I know you're going into executive session. Can the board let the public know who is being invited to the executive session? Because it looks like these youth reports on those, the meeting minutes, anyway.
Before, on meeting, there are no meeting minutes.
No, no.
Oh, who were interviewing you, meaning?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Invited into the meeting.
Sure, yeah, I think they're, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, just for.
I just, you scared me in there. Because in the executive session, there's no meeting minutes.
I think the board.
Yes, we, we can know who's coming up, yeah.
I think if we're talking specifically about the candidates for, what can see, I'm just, you know, I think, I think this board is obligated to disclose who has put a letter of interest into the, for the vacancy, but I'm trying to hold a second. I had printed it, but I don't want to do it. If that's specifically what you're asking about.
You want to know who, who is going in to executive session?
Yeah.
Like, like the last week, we had regenerative landholdings for, like the college.
Right, and you listed the three people that you invited to the executive session.
Yeah. Yeah, the candidates are.
Title twenty-four, appendix, chapter one thirty-three, which is on the whole B charter, subchapter three, section three oh six. And then, three oh six B. Any person legal voting H may within ten days of the publication submitted his or her name to the town manager as an applicant for the vacancy. The names of all applicants shall be entered into the minutes of the next regularly scheduled select board meeting, and that's where we are right now. So if you are ready to discuss that, I can tell you who has submitted a letter of interest.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll tell you who, you want to tell, state it, so for the minutes?
Sure. And I will state it and take the minutes. Isn't that amazing?
Absolutely is amazing.
No particular order of, of when they receive or otherwise. Patricia Davenport has submitted a letter of interest. Valerie Broughton, Alice Hilliard, Jonathan Andrews, Richard Rup, and Michelle McCarron. I've asked all of them if they could attend this meeting to discuss the position with the select board, and with the exception of Patty Davenport, I think they're all.
Patty's right on your screen.
Yeah, with the exception of Patty Davenport, I think they're all in the room. What I was going to say is, and Patty's online, so.
Yep. So that's who it is, okay? But they'll be reflected in the minutes. Any other comments or concerns from the public? Anybody's hand up?
Yeah.
Patty?
Yeah, I just want to say, I never got that communication from Paul as to being in the meeting, and we are out of town.
I left you a voicemail on, I think it was last Thursday, eight oh two, I don't know if I can tell you your phone number in a public meeting, but I don't know if it's, I left you a voicemail on your home telephone number.
Okay, let me tell you, our phone did not work for four days last week, so therefore that's what happened.
And I tried to call you this morning as well, but, in any event, you're here, thank you.
Yeah, you're here, Patty, and what we'll do is, when we go into executive session and start, we'll do you first, so that, you know, we can get everybody cleared off. We may have to clear you off or how we can keep you on, but you may have to get back on to join us on, on, on Zoom, but we'll do you first, okay? Okay. Be easier. All right, any other comments or concerns? All right, geez. Board orders, do I hear a motion to, to, uh, sign the board orders?
With the motion sent.
Second this.
Any comments or questions by the board? Call in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. And I go into executive session now for two items, like for candidates and contract matters.
Right, and we also have another.
Nice, thank you.
Personnel matter that came up, aside from the select board candidates, I'd like to discuss with the board.
A personnel matter?
So I think if we want to do a motion to enter executive session for personnel matters, and then another motion with the magic contract language that we have to use.
All right.
Yeah, very, executive session for discuss personnel matters.
Okay, all in favor? So we'll have to, tonight.
Okay, so we want to do a personnel matter first, and then go back to the candidates?
I was going to, we could go into the team.
Yeah. The guys, everybody that's coming to be interviewed, it's like the one, we'll do Patty first and then bring in.
About time to get my grab and go groceries from Bear Haven. Can I be at the end of your?
That one's so close to me.
Yeah, it was a busy day. I tried to get it earlier, but I haven't been able to stop over there.
It might be a half an hour.
It's okay, I got the end of the floor.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, so anyone who's participating via Zoom, I would appreciate.
You guys wait outside and we'll call you in.
Disembarking from the Zoom, with the exception of Patty, otherwise, all of you will leave, and Patty, I would ask you to come back. Maybe it's easier.
I just, so for Joel.
Go this way, go this way. Oh, he's right there?
Um, how about we have you come back, Patty? Is that easy enough for you to do?
That's fine. Do I just mute myself out or?
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna clear the room. I'm gonna clear the room, and then you sign off and then sign back in.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Patty.
I do.
Want to read the?
To read the.
Read the steel.
Oh, you gotta read the steel?
Yep.
Pursuant to one VSA, section three thirteen A one, I make a motion that this board finds a premature general public knowledge, clear the place this board or person involved as substantial disadvantage of certain matters related to contracts were discussed outside of the executive session. Pursuant to one VSA, section three thirteen A one A, I make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss that matter.
Okay. Now your motion.
Anyone in a second?
Any comments or questions by the board?
Okay, thank you.
Call in favor? Any opposed?